We'll call to order the full city council meeting for January 15th, 2019. The clerk will call the roll and record the attendance.
Anderson Burgos.
Here.
Bartley.
Here.
Bresnahan. Leahy.
Present.
LeBron Martinez.
Here.
Lisi. McGee.
Here.
McGivern.
Here.
Murphy.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tallman.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentin.
Please stand for the Pudge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyoke.
And the city council.
This is very dangerous of items.
So the first item on the agenda is public comment. No one has signed up for public comment. There's no one in the audience? Next is a communication, item number one, which is a list of appointments for January 2019. We have the administrative assistant, which is Ryan Allen for the city council. The assessor's office, currently Deborah Brunel. Water commissioner is vacant, and the Whiting Street Fund, which is Maria Burke.
Motion to take off the table, list of appointments, and move to the first ballot for administrative assistant.
Second.
Second.
Motion is to take up the administrative assistant for the first ballot. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So clerk will call roll. Once again, you can vote for whoever you want. The current position is held by Ryan Allen. And the first one to seven is, who would be the appointee?
McGivern.
Ryan Allen.
Murphy.
Ryan Allen.
Sullivan.
Ryan Allen.
Tallman.
Ryan Allen.
Bacon.
Ryan Allen.
Anderson Burgos.
Ryan Allen.
Bartley.
Ryan Allen.
Bresnahan.
Ryan Allen.
Leahy.
Mr. Ryan Allen.
LeBron Martinez.
Ryan Allen.
Lisi.
Sarah Qualia.
McGee.
Ryan Allen.
Ryan Allen, appointed on the first ballot with 11 votes, Sarah Qualia.
With your vote, you've approved Ryan Allen for a one-year term to expire January 2020. Is there another motion for the assessor?
A motion to move to the, take up the assessor off the table and move to the first ballot.
Second.
Motion is to take up the assessor for the first ballot. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Once again, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote, you're voting for the assessor's office, currently held by Deborah Brunel.
McGivern.
Deborah Brunel.
Murphy.
Deborah Brunel.
Sullivan.
Deborah Brunel.
Tallman.
Deborah Brunel.
Bacon.
Deborah Brunel.
Anderson Burgos.
Deborah Brunel.
Bartley.
Debbie Brunel.
Bresnahan.
Debbie Brunel.
Leahy.
Mrs. Deborah Brunel.
LeBron Martinez.
Mrs. Brunel.
Lisi.
Mrs. Brunel.
McGee.
Deborah Brunel.
Deborah Brunel, elected on the first ballot with 12 votes.
With your vote, you approve Deborah Brunel for a three-year term to expire January 2021. Next on the list is water commissioner.
Motion to take the ballot off the table and move, make, take the issue off the table, move to the first ballot.
Motion is moved to the first ballot. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clerk will call the roll. If you vote, you're voting for, and there is a vacancy, so there's no one there currently.
McGivern.
Kevin Jordan.
Murphy.
Kevin Jordan.
Sullivan.
Liam Bevan.
Tallman.
Liam Bevan.
Bacon.
Kevin Jordan.
Anderson Burgos.
Bevan.
Bartley.
Kevin Jordan.
Bresnahan.
Kevin Jordan.
Leahy.
Squire Kevin Jordan.
LeBron Martinez.
Mr. Bevan.
Lisi.
Liam Bevan.
McGee. Kevin Jordan, elected on the first ballot with seven votes. Liam Bevan had six votes.
With your vote, you approve the water commissioner a three-year term, January 2021.
Seven and five.
It couldn't be seven and five.
Seven and five, I'm sorry.
Right? Next is the Whiting Street Fund.
Mr. McGee, or present, for the people at home, everybody knows what we're doing here, and I've been around for a long time, so I know what the Whiting Street Fund is, but can you just give kind of a synopsis for those who are in the audience and for those who are watching at home? Oh, God. I can't.
Kevin Jordan gives a better rendition. It's a fund set up, but I will defer to Kevin Jordan, who actually is in the audience, who has handled that account. If you'd like, make a motion to suspend the rules, allow Kevin to speak.
So, move.
For president.
Back to work.
Whiting Street Fund.
Mike.
Two minutes.
Yeah, it won't even be that.
One minute.
The Whiting Street Fund is named after a gentleman by the name of Whiting Street, who left a large endowment to the city of Hoyoke for the benefit of the poor of the city of Hoyoke, and it has a commission that's almost 100 years old that distributes these funds to worthy people that would apply, who need help in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Currently serving the term is Maria Burke.
Motion, take up table, move to the first ballot.
Motion is moved to the first ballot. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clerk will call roll. You vote, you're voting for a three-year term.
McGivern.
Maria Burke.
Murphy.
Maria Burke.
Sullivan.
Maria Burke.
Tallman.
Maria Burke.
Bacon.
Maria Burke.
Anderson Burgos.
Maria Burke.
Bartley.
Maria Burke.
Bresnahan.
Maria Burke.
Leahy.
Mrs. Maria Burke.
LeBron Martinez.
Mrs. Burke.
Lisi.
Maria Burke.
McGee.
Maria Burke.
Maria Burke, appointed on the first ballot with 12 votes.
With your vote, you approve Maria Burke for a three-year term to expire January 2021. Item number two, from the mayor, a letter reappointing Jeffrey Heran from 100 Southampton Road.
Make a motion to reappoint.
Second.
Motion is reappoint. This will serve as a three-year term to expire February 1st, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item three is from the mayor rescinding his appointment of Susan Woods for the historic commission.
Is there a reason listed?
Says, "I'm hereby rescinding my appointment of the following individual to serve as an alternative member to the historical commission for the city of Hoyoke."
Motion, receive.
Motion is to receive.
So, three, four, as a package?
Well, I'm just going to give four, leave to withdraw, so.
Sure.
Well, motion, is motion to receive for number three?
Counselor Bacon, you also?
Yeah, it's just vote.
Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Four is the reappointment.
Leave till we draw, motion?
Second.
So this is, okay, motion would be to suspend the rules, allow the clerk to speak.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
So, item number three, which was originally on the last meeting, was an appointment to the historical commission from the mayor, and when the mayor, the letter was wrong, it was supposed to be to the Fairfield Avenue Historic Commission. So you guys appointed Susan Woods to the Fairfield, to the historical commission, but it was supposed to be to the Fairfield Commission. So item three is just the letter rescinding the vote you took the last meeting, and number four is the new appointing letter.
Oh, the right one.
Yeah.
Oh.
Fairfield, yeah.
So motion would be to reappoint.
Yeah, motion to reappoint.
Miss Woods to, three-year term.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five is the, from the city clerk, minutes of the regular meeting for December 18th and special meeting January 8th. Motion be to receive unless there's any question. Motion is to table?
Second.
Motion is to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Yes, because, yeah, we don't have narratives.
All right, so six.
Please.
From Marco Spurrier, Director of Planning and Economic Development, opinion on a purpose of effective debit exclusion override or debt exclusion override.
Motion to receive and send to finance.
Motion is received.
Copy of DGR, please.
Referring to finance with a copy to DGR. Copy to DGR?
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
There's a whole box.
Seven is from Al Williams. In accordance with the bylaws of Hoyoke Community Media, the city council, city, the council of the city of Hoyoke is entitled to appoint a community member to serve on the board of directors of Hoyoke Media. Term will be for three years. Some attributes which we hope you'll consider in the person you appoint include legal, accounting, banking skills, diversity, gender, language, and cultural background, and leadership skills. Our bylaws require that the board member not currently hold an elected office. Please choose either a current board member or another community member to serve the term, which will, which is actually starting January 30th, 2019.
Can we just refer this to the?
Public service.
Personnel office and they can advertise for this? Is that what we're doing?
So, how about we send it to public service, copy to personnel, and then they can post it?
Sure. So moved.
All right, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eight is the fire commission minutes for November 15th, 2018.
Receive.
Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Under discussion.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Bartley?
I just want to point out that, first of all, those minutes were, as per usual, they're really, they're really good. It's a good summation of the board of fire commissioners. They're always well done. I think in this case, I think it would behoove us to really read those and point out stations three and six, just how in desperate need the, those buildings are. And so I think everybody should be aware of that. We brought it up in finance last night. It's my hope that the superintendent of the public works will connect with the HFD chief and start to put together some kind of a plan or a budget or proposal to fix those buildings, because the firefighters are taking money out of their own pockets, they're using their own expertise to fix buildings. I mean, it's not their job. So we're supposed to have fully operational buildings. We shouldn't be, you know, ham and egg in it. So it's my, it's my hope that we can maybe get them to stick with this. Thank you.
All right, so motion was to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? President's report, I'll make it quick. I know there's a long agenda, so Counselor Valentin is out of town. She wanted me to let people know she is sorry for that, but she is out of town on a prior obligation. January 22nd, campaign finance reports are due, just as a friendly reminder. And other than that, that's all I have. Anyone else for reports or anything to share? No? Okay, we'll move on to reports of committees. Ordinance 9A.
Can we take A and B together, please?
Motion is to suspend the rules, take up 9A and B as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 9A is a special.
I'd like to abstain.
Yeah, okay, we'll get, yeah.
Why?
We'll get to that, hold on, hold on. Committee on Ordnance was referred to special permit application from Westfield Bank for the installation of an ATM at 1650 North Hampton Street. B is a special permit application, once again, from Westfield Bank, installation of drive-through ATM, same, same location. Signed off by, I'm going to Counselor Anderson Burgos. You did sign 9A, would you like me to remove your name from that? Okay. Counselor Anderson Burgos will abstain from this vote due to a conflict that he has expressed, so therefore, just putting that on the record. With that, it says that, considered at the same, recommended that special permit application be approved on 9A and B. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance committee held a number of public hearings regarding these applications because there was some confusion in the beginning. They came in with one application. After a number of public hearings, it became clear that it was really a two-part thing due to the complexity of the location of the building, and then the fact that the drive-through had been out of use for more than two years. So it necessitated that the applicant make a second application, which they did, and committee kept the two together. Originally, it had been referred to DGR, but in the interest of keeping the process at least a little bit smoother, because it had already been very choppy, we did put them together in ordinance committee and completed the public hearing process that way. So over the last at least two months, if not longer, we did hear from the public, we did hear concerns about the abutters. The biggest concerns the committee heard were relative to noise, and the concern of the applicant put forth to the committee and the public was relative to safety for the workers and the users of the bank and in the neighborhood, given attempted robberies, and trying to improve line of sight. And also, through the public hearing, it seemed that people would actually be on the property a shorter amount of time, going through a drive-through than parking, getting out of their vehicle and being in. The other condition that we have placed on this special permit, which I will get to, is relative to noise, because the buffers in that area, because it was an unusual parcel, so the front and back are really more the side, so the buffers are smaller than would be in a new construction, but because it was old construction, we considered it under this special permit. And so the noise concern was seen as reasonably raised, and the applicant has agreed to put up fencing, getting a permit to go to eight feet, and putting in acoustic-style fencing, so that hopefully it will actually reduce the noise from both the drive-through for the ATM and the drive-through that is used all the time currently. So hopefully, there might be something gained. Because of those concerns, there is an opportunity in a year to review for noise as a condition of the special permit, to see if there are any noise issues and concerns that will need to be mitigated. So on that basis and with those conditions on the special permit, the committee recommended that the council approve the special permit.
Counselor Bacon, I'm just looking at the documents that I have. Can you state the conditions on the record, because they're not with this order? Just so we have it on the record and we make sure we look correctly.
Okay, so the first condition is that the applicant will provide an eight-foot acoustic fence between the ATM and the residence in question, the abutter. And the second condition is that a year following the issuance of the special permit, that a review may be undertaken if there are concerns and issues relative to noise subsequent to the granting of the permit. And that it may involve, there was an amendment to that special permit made in committee, that it may involve some, what was the word?
Landscaping, additional plantings.
Or something may arise.
Was that a requirement, that landscaping in? No?
It just said that it may arise from a review.
The review, with the review.
If.
Okay.
If there's a problem. So it's to give an avenue if there's a problem.
Okay. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I just want to clarify the chair lady's amendments there. So the fence would run the length of the abutters property? So that, that should be specified as a condition? So I'll make both these a motion, just to make them official.
And I'll second it.
But these were approved. And then the review should be, is subject to review of the building commissioner. He's, the building, his office, that, I should say, that office is one that's be, would be reviewing the, whether or not everything's working according to what we anticipate, according to what the applicant and according to what the abutter, the abutters' expectation. So the building commissioner will have, will have the authority to impose additional, if necessary, additional requirements relative to the, to the noise and the lighting.
So the motion is to require that the fence go the length of the property?
Yes.
That's one.
That's one.
All right, so let's vote on that. So the motion was seconded, that the fence run.
It wasn't, it wasn't the length of the property.
No, the, the, it is a length. It is, it's, there's a whole fence that goes in that, you know, for, for that, from the, from the gate at St. Rome's. Now, right, so no trees removed, but it's to replace the existing fence and put up a, a new acoustic sound barrier-type fence.
Is it sufficient the way the Counselor Bacon said it, or did you want a motion to guarantee that it goes a certain distance?
It's in, it's in the plans.
Okay.
It's part of the permit application.
Yeah, I'm just saying I don't have it here, but that, okay.
So I think Counselor Lisi said it just perfectly. It's in the plans, but Counselor Bacon said it's eight-foot high with the acoustic barrier.
Okay.
And then the other one was that, just to clarify, who, what office has the authority to review it? It's the office of the building commissioner.
Okay.
So those are motions for the conditions on second now.
Yeah.
Since you don't have it before.
All right. So with regards to those motions, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
And so then the motion from the committee is to grant the special permits.
So motion is to grant the special permits, which is approving 9A and B as a package.
Yes, to approve the special permits with conditions.
With conditions. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. President.
Hold on, Counselor Tallman, and then.
Yeah, through the chair, to the chairperson of the committee. When is this, is this work being done already? The fencing? Is it going to be done?
There is already a fence there.
What, they're gonna?
It's just a sort of a plain wood slat fence.
Okay.
And it would be replaced with a better, more acoustic fence materials.
Okay, and, and, because I'm just getting some emails and some calls from the neighbor in that area, and, and within a year, if there's a problem, then they'll revisit that if it finds out that there's too much noise.
Yes, and Counselor Bartley just clarified that it would properly be the building commissioner that would look at that, because otherwise, it would be coming back to a committee that doesn't deal with that.
Okay.
So that's the proper place for it to be reviewed.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, I, obviously, I'm coming in late on this, but I did catch a little bit of the ordinance committee meeting last Tuesday. I also tried to catch some of it, and I took three visits to the site. A couple of them at night, a couple of them in the middle of the daytime, and I'm, I'm fine with an ATM being installed within the building. But I'm assuming the ATM that we're talking about is at the far end of the drive-through. Is that correct?
If I may? They already have an ATM in the building. Their goal is to move the ATM out of the building so that people don't have to be parking and accessing the relatively unexposed building in the nighttime.
So they have?
They already have a 24-hour ATM.
Okay, in the building.
They're just, they want to locate it so that people can access it from their car instead of having to get out of their car.
I'm still confused here. So we're having an ATM that's already there, would be moved so that it can just be a drive-through?
Correct.
So there won't be an ATM in the bank itself? Yeah, I mean, first of all, with all due respect, and I, all for convenience, but there's no doubt in my mind, having done that, that this is definitely an inconvenience, and I can see late-night situations occurring there in a year from now. If I'm that homeowner, my property value is going down. If they've got an ATM already there, and let me ask one other question. Is there any possibility of creating a time restriction on the ATM?
We, through, through the president, these issues were raised during the public hearing process, and the rationale for the bank to be seeking to move the ATM was explored in the number of public hearings that we held. They have had security issues there, both on the part of their staff and people utilizing the bank, and they want to create a reconstruction of the bank that allows for a better line of vision for people coming into the bank and the people working in the bank. And in order to accomplish that, they're, they want to remove the ATM, which requires the people to enter into the front door and the main door to access it so that they can reconfigure that wall to improve security on the site and to improve efficiency of the people getting on and off the site. So that was addressed pretty thoroughly in the public hearings. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm not saying that wasn't addressed, and obviously, I wasn't at these meetings, so I'm honest with that, but when I found out about it, I started taking a look. And if I'm that homeowner, or maybe several little owners, because I put my car in there last night, and they can put an eight-foot fence, but I'm still having my lights shining in there, and if I take, open my window and I've got my radio playing, as many people play their radios, at 2:00 in the morning, 1:00 in the morning, whatever it is, we're going to be causing disturbances in the neighborhood. I'm all for trying to make it safer, but I don't think the alternative of going to that, again, if I'm correct, the farthest part of that drive-through, which is right next door to that person's home. And I just would like to see if there was another alternative. They want to transfer the ATM and attach it to the building where their parking is, I'd be, I'd be much more inclined to accept that. Thank you.
Counselor Lisi.
Thank you, I just wanted to say a few things. So we could put conditions on the ATM drive-through hours. That's something that we have the capacity to do as a council. But I do, I don't think it would serve the purpose, because I think people going to a drive-through ATM would assume that it's 24 hours. So putting a time restriction wouldn't prevent people from coming through, because they would just be assuming already that they should be able to access that service 24 hours. So I don't think that that's a meaningful condition to put on there. I think Counselor Bacon mentioned the, the security issues of the ATM machine inside the building, and that's why they're seeking to move it outside. And I was definitely concerned about the, the noise issues as well, and I really took my time to listen to the neighbors, but for me, the most compelling piece of evidence was in the plan submitted. When you look at the way an acoustic fence works, you want the acoustic fence to be closest to the noise source. So if you put the fence further away from the source of the noise, it actually doesn't do as efficient or thorough a job of blocking the noise. And so for me, that one piece of evidence and the way that an acoustic fence works, it's, you, you, the neighbors are offered more protection by having the lane closer to them in terms of the noise that would be carried over the fence. If it's further away, it has more of an opportunity to cross the fence. If it's closer, the, the sound will be blocking, will be blocked more, more thoroughly at, at that site. So for me, that, that was the, you know, the, the scientific explanation that really made me feel comfortable saying that I think the noise concerns will be addressed by that eight-foot acoustic fence.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. President. So one of the, a couple of reasons I voted for, or voted, supported this through the multiple public hearings, it wasn't just last Tuesday, Mr. President. There were probably five or six other public hearings relative to the same thing, where we took a lot of testimony. I think, I think the added security with, with the cameras and, and the additional lighting and then, and then the acoustic fence, I don't think it's going to detract from a property value. I think if anything, it'll increase the property value, Mr. President. The third piece is, along that same stretch of, of highway is, is People's Bank, which we approved in DGR for a drive-through. United Bank, which has a drive-through. Westfield Bank, which now is going to have a, hopefully have a drive-through. And future attractions, though it hasn't been said for sure, but we're pretty confident there will be some sort of financial institution where the Lynch School currently sits, likely with a drive-through. At least, those, in fact, those are the plans presented before us. So now we have a competitor with Westfield Bank in question, and we're going to say to them, well, all your competitors have drive-throughs, and you can't, you can't have a drive-through. Though it's been a wonderful corporate citizen to Hoyoke for, for generations and preceding, preceding institutions. And so, so to me, Mr. President, those were the compelling arguments that were made. And I thought the committee not only bent over backwards, hearing, hearing the abutters and hearing the arguments of the Word six counselor when he was there, but we implemented, I, I think, very reasonable and sensitive conditions, if, if this, if this city council so approves it, to mitigate any concerns. Because we don't know what the future holds, but we said, we're going to put it in the hands of the Building Commissioner to see how this goes from next year. But it wasn't just one meeting, it was multiple meetings over multiple months. So based upon all that, Mr. President, I, I fully endorse this petition.
Counsel Leacy?
So two things I want to say. Number one, in full disclosure, the Building Commissioner is my partner, but I don't think that the Building Commissioner has the authority to amend our special permit, and so I would offer an amendment to the amendment that was made, that really, the, the people that should be reviewing the special permit in one year, and what I thought I was voting on in committee last week was that the city council be reviewing the special permit.
So, hold on, hold on, hold on. So the amendment was to make sure the fence went the length of the property and done correctly?
And the noise.
And noise. And I know there was, there was a condition about the Building Commissioner, I'm not sure if that was part of the motion, but we can always check the record. If we're saying that it was part of the motion, you're asking that it be changed to, just stricken, or?
The city council will be the one that reviews the permit in one year.
Okay, so the motion is that the Building Commissioner requirement be stricken from this condition. Is there a second?
If I...
Once again, there's no second to that. Counselor, unless, do you have another motion, or?
No, it just doesn't make sense.
Okay, so it was seconded, so let's follow the form. It was seconded. Under discussion, Counsel Bacon.
So I just want to offer an amendment that I think is a win-win, to just keep it that the Building Commissioner will give us feedback relative to the rules and regs, and that those recommendations, if there are noise issues, will then be reconsidered in committee under the conditions in the year. So let the Commissioner look at it, let him send us, but put it in, back into committee. Keep it with the Commissioner to the committee in a year.
Counsel President?
That would be just...
My recommendation is that you send it to the Board of Health Director. Chapter 111, 119 allows him to enforce any nuisance, public source of disgrace, anything like, the Building Commissioner has nothing to do with drive-throughs. If somebody's throwing nip bottles and beer bottles and making a lot of noise over somebody's yard, send it to the Health Department. That's their law, mass general law, that allows them to do that. It's one of the strongest laws in state statute. But secondly, I would, you know, I, I'm for this, I am, but I will say that many of the banks that have mentioned, don't have a neighbor right next door to that drive-through. The Hoyouk Credit Union abuts the bank. People's Bank abuts the bank. People's Bank on South Street abuts a bank, and they have no, they don't have a residential house really kind of in the neighborhood, except on the corner. I mean, we could go through all the banks that have ATMs. What they have currently on North Hampton Street is a line of bushes, and right next door to that is a home. So if people don't think that people are going to drive-through at two o'clock in the morning to put their debit card in and flick their cigarette butt through the bushes, I know there's a fence going up, but it is reasonable. I also realize that not all of us were, were city councilors, and not all of us were at every single public hearing, so let's, 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 let's be a little bit kinder. And, and I just think that, you know, it's January 2019, let's have a better year this year, so be a little bit kinder to everyone, and let's hear everybody out. Everybody's got a fair shake in this game. But I'm for this motion, I'm for it, I'm voting for it, put a fence up, whatever you guys want to do. Westfield Bank wants to be a business. We don't want another vacant building in town. We want somebody to pay taxes, because everybody's taxes are going up, we got the CPA, we got everything else delightful, they want us to, to increase taxes to spend for two brand-new schools. Let's keep Westfield Bank home. They want the drive-through, let's give it to them.
Mr. President, I'll withdraw my amendment, and I will second his amendment.
So the motion, or the motion to amend is that the Board of Health Director do the review and enforcement. Now it was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. So the amendments have been done, are there any, any further discussion on nine A and B? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for A and B as a package.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Abstain.
O'Leary abstain. Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Ten yeas, one nay, one abstain.
With your vote, you approve the special permits.
Kindler gentler.
Nine C, the Committee on Orange has referred a zone change application for 15 Holy Family Road, recommended that the zone change be approved, signed off by, for the members.
So the motion is to receive and approve the zone change?
Clerk?
Motion is to receive and approve the zone change, under discussion, Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. This group submitted by Tom Adamczyk came before us. It was a pretty straightforward zone change application. The site is situated between Tokoniki and Farnham and Devonshire Apartments. The planning board opened their hearing, I think, a couple of weeks after we did, so we held it open while they met, I think, maybe they, they actually opened their hearing at our last meeting. During our meeting, we received the recommendation from the planning board, which unanimously recommended that we approve this zone change, finding it compatible with the area from a zoning point of view, and that the use was found to be reasonable. This is a zone change from R1A to Zone RM20, which does allow for multiple housing, but not the densest of multiple housing. There were two concerns from the public raised in ordinance committee relative to traffic. Folks did come in and speak on the proposal. We did clarify that in terms of our role, we're really just looking at the zoning, and the site review process would take place properly with the planning board. And so following the public hearing and hearing the input from the folks and the applicant, the committee voted, all present voted in favor of moving forward with this zone change. Thank you.
Counsel Bartley?
I, as a kindler gentler 2019, and a kindler gentler Danny Brezneren, I, boy, I feel, I feel good already with that pep talk. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, boy, I'll tell ya. So I'm gonna be unkind and ungentle, right? I do support this, I do support this, I did hear the abutters concerns, reasonable concerns. The parcel in question sits directly in front of Mount St. Vincent Nursing Home, in between Benefield, where we all grew up playing a lot of baseball, a lot of soccer, and all sorts of things, and just be in front of that, it's Don U School, just arrange yourselves. There's about seven and a half acres there, Mr. President, that is now overgrown with weeds and, and trees and other rocks and, and things and all that, just like the Americans saw it, nanny. So, so, and so, so that, but that parcel, Mr. President, is, is yet another eyesore brought to us by the Diocese of Springfield, that left it there, left it there vacant forever, and it would have stayed there vacant. So fortunately, the Adamsic Brothers have come in to the rescue. And, and the Diocese of Springfield, which will be before us for another matter very soon, relative to the, to the proposed middle school, will receive a very, very handsome, handsome check. I'm not going to say what the number is, but it's in the six-figure range. And so good for the Diocese of Springfield, stick it to Holyoke every time, but when, when they need something through a third party, the Holyoke City Council is going, well, I'm going to support it anyhow. And so the Diocese of Springfield is going to take a dilapidated seven-and-a-half-acre lot that they left there for dead for years, and now they're gonna, now they're gonna get yet another check coming out of the City of Holyoke, on top of that $18 million they already stole, with, with all sorts of other things that they've stolen from the City of Holyoke. So it's, it just, it just, it never ends. And, 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 and why even bother to talk about Ma de la Rosa with, with that phony negotiation? So we'll, we'll talk about that at the appropriate time, Mr. President, with, with Ma de la Rosa and the Chestnut Street School, how phony that contract was. And now the Diocese wants, would want to take another $125,000 from the City of Holyoke to sell, to buy that. But I do support this, this particular zone change, and, but I want, on the record, I want it known that the beneficiary of this is the Diocese, they're the ones that are going to get the check. Now ultimately, long-term, I support it also because for the good of the City of Holyoke. You know, despite my misgivings about the Diocese, and how terrible they've been to the city over, over the last 10 years, 20 years, this is for the, this is for the better of the city, and it is in Ward Five, and the Ward Five Council supports it. I think it's going to be a benefit to the neighborhood, and, and the abutting businesses, Mr. President, whether it's the mall, or JP's, or Holyoke Crossing, whatever that's called up there, with Applebee's, I think that they're all gonna, they're all gonna benefit from, from 100 units of, of market-rate housing. I, I, I know it's going to be, there's going to be a traffic consequence, we know that, but let's, let's hope that we can, as a city, and I know the Ward Five Council works diligently on these things for Holy Family Road, and that cut-through from Route Five up, up to, up to the mall, I mean, we, we've got to do something. And now we have a tractor-trailer company, we're glad to have them, you know, the Warner family, we're glad to have them in Holyoke, but tractor-trailer trucks are driving all over Holyoke. I mean, I'm glad they're here, it's a wonderful family, and it's a great business, but it's added to the congestion in that area, you can't deny it. So those concerns were heard, Mr. President. It's like anything else, we don't have an easy fix for, for traffic and for speeding, but we're, we're doing our best. But I think on, on the merits of this, I think it's a worthwhile project, and I support it.
Counsel Leacy?
Thanks, I just wanted to note that the property that's being looked at for the zone change, it abuts Tokoniki, which is currently RM20, and so it's really just an extension of the RM20 zone on our land use map. It, it seems to fit the neighborhood, and again, they're trying to build three-story market-rate housing, about 100 units, 100 new taxpayers in the city. Thank you.
Counsel McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to echo this prior speaker's positive support for this zone change. First and foremost, the, the zone change is compatible with the surrounding properties in terms of use. Second, it's, it's part of that new growth formula that we need and so desperately are looking for. A couple of the issues, one of the issues that wasn't mentioned this evening that came up was a question about the height of the project, the two to three stories, if it's compatible with the current zone text as it stands now, and, and it is, but I, I wouldn't mind to see if there was an expiration, to see if it could go four stories. And the reason is, being a little bit selfish, is because when you assess property, you assess square footage. Every time you go up a story, you double that square footage, and more tax dollars come to the City of Hoyoke. I agree that we have to mitigate the intersection regardless of this project of Lower Westfield Road and Holy Family Road. It's become a nightmare, even with the Geriatric Authority closed, with the way traffic comes through that intersection with the three-stop signs, and it's always a, a big question when you try to, when you try to maneuver through that section. And I, and I think, and I don't, no doubt, the developers will work with the, with the abutters from Mount St. Vincent in terms of landscaping and buffer zones. But this is a, a win for the City of Hoyoke, and I certainly support it, and I hope, I hope everybody else does, too.
Counsel Tomlin?
Yeah, very positive impact for the city, and I'm glad the Adamsic Brothers came in and took this property. I almost, I'm up that area almost every day, visiting my in-laws up in Tokoniki, so I actually walk by there and drive-through there, and as Counsel Bartley said, it's overgrown with rocks and, and brush and a lot of, lot of trash that blows around is right there, and we definitely need the tax dollars, we definitely need homeowner, you know, people in our city, and this is one area that can contribute to the, the community and to our city, up, up there in, on Holy Family Road. But I definitely agree that we need some, as, as they, they do bill, that the traffic's got to be looked at, that, that intersection, you know, with the three-stop signs and, and up on, up by Hoyouk Crossing, it's definitely, needs to be some improvements there, and that's another, that's through another department, but it's definitely something that I think should be looked into and taken care of for, for the people that live in that area, especially a couple of those homes there on Lower Westfield Road that is, and the front, has a front-row seat to the traffic there on a daily basis. I'm, I'm really concerned about them, but we can't, we can't let another business or another, another growth area impact the city, get away from it, so I am very much in favor of this zone change.
There's no further discussion, the motion was to, Counsel Bacon, where are we?
The motion on the floor was to approve the special permits with conditions, as voted.
No.
Oh, no.
No, no, this is nine C, those are done.
It was, no, I already made the motion to receive the report and approve the special, the zone change.
To approve the zone change from...
Yes, I already made that motion, and it's on the floor.
R-1A to RM-20, it was seconded. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the zone change.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yep.
McGee?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the zone change from R-1A to RM20. Committee on Finance, 10A?
President, can we suspend the rules to take 10A together for discussion with 10F?
Second.
Motion is to suspend the rules, take up 10A and F as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 10A, the Committee on Finance has referred from Free Cash $403,804.41 to various line items. And then 10F, the Committee on Finance has referred an MOA between the City of Hoyoke and the local 1693 union, recommended that 10F is complied with, recommended that 10A be adopted.
On 10A, the motion would be to pass the first reading, and then we'll, if I can make a committee report.
Motion would be to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met last night after, during the special meeting, week before, we received the, this financial transfer, which goes hand-in-hand with the, with the agreement with the firefighters, local 1693. We received that MOU on December 4th, and we've all had the, it's a four-page document, but we've all had a copy of it on your desk this evening, a hard copy has been provided. The financial transfer comes from Free Cash, which we know just recently was certified, and it goes into the line items of captains, lieutenants, firefighters, supervisors, supervisor of the fire alarm, assistant supervisor and fire alarm operators. It will cover for this fiscal year the salary increases, and it will recover all retroactive increases that the contract, if it's ratified this evening, that the contract will produce. The salary increases are as, as goes. For this fiscal year, there is a, starting in January 1st, actually, the retroactive part is Jan, July 1st of 2017, a 1.5%, and then added into a January 1st of 2018, a 1.5%. July 1st of 2018, it was 1%, and, which was just this past week, a 1% for July 1 of 2018. This roughly reflects a 5% increase over a two-plus-year period. That is what the contract covers, to pay for, again, the retroactive and the salary increases of these percentages. The future impact on salaries will be for fiscal year 2020, that would begin July 1 2019, and another additional 1.25% July 1 2020. The fiscal 2020 would be a 2.5% increase on the salaries. By that time, no retroactive would be part of it, it would just be going forward. And then the final increase in the contract is fiscal 2021, which would be a 1% in July of 2020, and a 1% in July of 2021, equalling 2%. That's the financial increases which the committee felt were fair and negotiated well both by the city. This contract, as we know, there was a negotiation that failed to get the necessary votes in the council last June, went back to the table, there was additional bargaining, it did go to mediation, which is the first step before going to arbitration. Other impacts of, on the monetary part of this contract to the city budget includes in item seven, an increase in the EMS fees. As you know, all of our, I forget the exact date, I think it goes back to, goes back for some time, all of our newly hired firefighters are EMTs. This would, this is just a reflection of the city reimbursing their certification that they have to keep up for, it's a two-year, two-year period, and the costs have gone up. Also, on number, item number eight, the clothing allowance has increased for recognizing the fact of clothing allowance going up. Clothing allowance includes, and the city does provide, the safety equipment, safety helmets and, and clothing that the fire department needs, but it was noted last night that there was a discussion about how many firefighters go above and beyond and buy, buy clothing and buy certain safety equipment that the city does not provide for additional protection to their selves, but the city meets the, above the standards, but the standards of what should be expected. The, the other impact is, if you look at item number nine, this is on page three, the longevity currently is, is a, a set stipend when a person reaches their, their years of service, and that's on their, it goes by their... on their, goes by their hire date. The new longevity is based on the same 10 years, 15, 20, 25, and 30 years of service, but it is transferred into a percentage of the base salary. For example, 10 years is now going to be a 1.5% base salary, 15, 1.75. Goes up to 30 years where it's either $3,100 or 4% of the base, whichever is greater. There was some discussion about this. We learned last night that it was actually the city who asked for the percentage. I believe something similar was done in the policeman's contract. I, although, have some concerns with it. We are not the negotiating body. The financial impact is yet to be known because this cannot be calculated until the given year, I'm sorry, this does not go into effect until fiscal year 2020. And this cannot be calculated until you know who is actually serving on the fire departments. I think it's kind of obvious that when we have a younger fire department, this would probably benefit the city. When we have an older and mature fire department, it may work in the other direction. Should it work out, either way, it's up to be determined. That's the financial impacts of the contract. There were a couple of other questions that were asked. There is, Counselor Bacon did ask about a residency issue. There is a clause in the residency issue. And I know, again, we cannot negotiate a contract. We can only vote up an appropriation that will fund the contract. But I made it known last night that that means we do need to know the current impact on the budget. We do need to know future impacts on the budget. And anything in here, and I think our good president will point this out, is subject to have some value to it in terms of negotiations, even though we cannot negotiate it. We did ask the law department to supply us with an opinion. I just received, this is last night, and I just received the opinion this evening about five minutes ago. I just wanted to pass out copies for everybody. And Ryan, if I can not stop talking, would you help me out for the other side of the room?
Give us the history on the fire department.
And I'd like to tell you about the fire department, and going back to Ernie Prue days, which, Prue days.
Can we get a vote here, man?
On the motion. Everybody on the other side, if you could. Resident, a question on residency by Counselor Bacon, I'm sure she's going to speak for herself, and as others may, is the ordinance that was passed by the city council and what supersedes what collective bargaining ordinances, state statutes, and so on. The other question, Mr. President, was a question about, on the bottom of page one, there's two asterisks, and there's a note that the parties acknowledge that the terms disagreement shall resolve all issues pertaining to the introduction of action ambulance in the city of Hoyoke and reorganization changes alleged in a MUP 175986. If I understood this correctly, this is something that the union grieved when the action ambulances was allowed to house in each of our stations, in the ambulance, for a purpose of dispatching, for a purpose of answering to medical calls. And if this contract is ratified, the union has agreed that they will withdraw the grievance, which is actually beyond grievance, and I believe, if I'm saying it right, just somebody nodded their head, it's in mediation? No? Am I getting close?
We're litigating.
Got to go to the microphone. If I can hold on a second, Tasha did a big part of this with our law department. It's being litigated, and this, right now, is being litigated in-house, but it could certainly lead to some costs to the city. But the city and the union did agree that that litigation would end pending the ratification of this contract. Pretty much in a nutshell, I think that's it. We have the law department here, we have our city auditor here, and we have, of course, the president of the union and members of the fire department here. We did meet and we did discuss this for a good hour last evening.
So is there a motion to suspend the rules for law legal to speak with regards to the...
On the motion.
Okay. I'm just asking, I'm asking you, I don't make motions.
Does anybody not know what's going on?
We all know.
I just want to summarize, I don't, I would like them to summarize this so I don't have to sit here and read 10 pages.
Come on, I'm just trying to slow the Joe.
I'd like to make a motion.
The motion is to allow legal to address the form we just received. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Hi, Tasha Marshall, Assistant City Solicitor. The four-page opinion that you all just received is answering the legal question that was posed to us yesterday, whether the contract language in the CBA supersedes the city ordinance. And the answer to that question is the language in the CBA will supersede the city ordinance. This was a question that has come before city council in the past, so I've attached copies of those opinions before. One of those opinions was from 1988, the other opinion is from 1997. However, the law is still current. Any language in any CBA contract will always supersede any city ordinance.
Counselor Bacon, do you have more, or? All right, Counselor Sullivan.
So, Tasha, I completely understand that, I think everybody else here does. What I don't understand is how a employee of the city, or an elected official of the city, or can negotiate in the first place a city ordinance as a bargaining chip in these contract negotiations? How is that possible?
Well, the prior CBA that we had that expired on June 30 of 2016 didn't allow, didn't have any residency requirement. So the contract that we just negotiated requested of our members to either live within the city or live within 15 miles of the city.
I understand that, but you're not answering my question. How in the first place do we get to negotiate laws? How do we get to just say, I will throw that, we'll throw that law out the window?
Well, it's not a matter of throwing a law out of the window or throwing a city ordinance out of the window. However, anything that's in the contract, it would have to be negotiated. So if we...
How does a city law become something that can be negotiated? It's a law.
Counselor, she's answering the question. Larry, answer first.
The city did present this to the union, for this to be something to be part of the contract. However, if we're not able to, we can't force the union to accept our ordinance or accept our laws. Like, anything that goes into the CBA, that's what's going to rule, and we have to negotiate on those terms.
I just don't feel I'm getting an answer, but.
Mr. President.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you, Tasha. Thank you for the excellent work you did tonight, and thank you for agreeing with my opinion last night. Because I did say that pretty much verbatim. Can I just ask you, who on the city side went to negotiations with the brave men and women from the fire department? Because I'm kind of going along the same lines as Michael Sullivan here.
This contract was negotiated, well, this contract has been negotiated for over three years now. Sarah Carroll started, the last person...
The part with the residency.
I'm not sure where the residency part came about. I came into part of the negotiations where that was already decided on.
Maybe can we ask one of the firefighters? If I could suspend necessary rules and have one of the firefighters approach her? Because that's a question that's very important.
I think everybody's confused. It was already in our contract. The city wanted to tighten it up, and that's what we did. We just abide by the laws, what the city proposed to us, what the law said. The state law, not the ordinance.
Okay, so everything's kosher, everything's fine.
Right. It's been in our contract since I've been on the job, so it's 18 years.
All right, all right, thank you. You cleared up a lot of confusion there. You know, some of the things that we were discussing last night is, you know, the dollar figures and whatnot, and I made it clear that I'm for the percent. Another thing, too, from what I heard last night, it wasn't the city went from the dollar, hard dollar value to the percentage, it was the firefighters who asked for that, right?
No. I was incorrect. It was the city that asked for the percentages, and the union did agree to that. So that's why there's two different longevity clauses.
Okay, and that just goes along with the same with the fire, police department, right?
I believe so. I don't, I haven't seen the police contract. That contract expires this year as well.
No, it does. Thank you. And I'm all in favor of that, because as I spoke last night, very eloquently, as Peter would say, 25 years and 30 years is very difficult for a firefighter to reach. And the fact that we're giving a little bit more percentage is just, you know, it's, we're very excited at the fact that they're still with us, and they're doing a great job. So I'm all in favor of that. I'm also all in favor of the fact that we're raising up their uniform allowance. Thank you.
Very sharp dressers.
These people go through clothes very quickly, and it's very expensive. And the city gives, and I'm not going to say the bare minimum, they give exactly, you know, what they need, but anything more is on their back, literally, at times. So I certainly want to say I'm in favor of that as well. I'm also in favor of the fact that these people have not had a contract for the last three years. They've had to go to mediation twice. It's time to give these guys the contract. I do understand, and they understand, because I've talked to them, is the city of Hoyoke is not in a very excellent cash flow predicament here. After tonight, after we vote for everything, our free cash is, what's the time is, what, 125?
171.
171. So we're in some tough shape here. But I'm going to support this, and God bless all the firefighters. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess the process question that I am left with, okay, what I am understanding from your answers through the president is that the executive branch of the government can negotiate away an ordinance created by the legislative branch, which just to me seems fundamentally out of order. Now, if there was a legal opinion before us that said state law supersedes local ordinances, I could get that. But I just am having trouble understanding the legal basis for which a local law could be essentially done away with through a negotiation process out of the executive side of the government. But that is, in essence, what I'm understanding them to be saying. Is, am I understanding you correctly?
Yes. In the Supreme Judicial Court, I mean, the legislature of our state, they all feel the same way. I don't, I mean, I didn't write the law, I just wrote the legal opinion, and that is what our laws are, and that's been the law since 1988.
So they're saying that the state law prevails?
There's any, what you just said, that if the executive branch agrees to something in a contract, and if what is in that contract conflicts with a city ordinance, the contract will prevail over the city ordinance.
But the contract would not be able to violate the state law, would it?
I don't think so, no. I would have to look more into that in terms of the state law, but in reference to collective bargaining agreements, then yes. Even if it violates the state law, then yes. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan.
Okay, so, Tasha, one more time. Because I'm in favor of this appropriation. What I'm still not, what's bothering me is how it came about, and I'm going to go exactly what Counselor Bacon just said. So I'm to understand, then, that it is okay for the executive to take any city ordinance they want in any contract negotiation, and in effect, just throw it out the window.
I'm going to defer to Crystal Barnes.
The state law is telling you that a collective bargaining agreement, not any contract, the executive can't negotiate all contracts and completely supersede city ordinance, collective bargaining agreements, a state law is telling you that those are going to supersede your city ordinance. So the state law here is saying, yes, you can create a city ordinance to try and provide some guidance, but ultimately, we're going to allow the unions to negotiate some terms and have some power. So that's why the CBAs are able to override some city ordinances.
So what you're telling me is, yes, the executive can take a city ordinance, a law that we've enacted here in this body, and it in effect becomes a bargaining chip? That's in effect what you're telling, I understand the part about what supersedes what. It's how it gets to that point in the first place. And you're saying, that's okay. Any ordinance we have is negotiable.
That's so weird to me. Not, I would say not necessarily. I mean, it would depend on issues that would come about in the collective bargaining agreement. I mean, not, there are certain things in our city ordinance that apply to ordinance employees. And there are certain things in our collective bargaining agreements that would apply to members of that collective bargaining agreement, such as vacation time, longevity pay, personal time.
So some ordinances are negotiable and some aren't negotiable? How do we know, how do you determine which ones are and which ones aren't?
It would be a matter of if the ordinance, well, let me take a step back. It's not necessarily the ordinance that's being negotiated here. It's these employees' rights that are being negotiated in the CBA contract. So we're negotiating vacation time, salary, pay increases, personal time, et cetera.
Anything further? Counselor Leacy, then Counselor Bartley.
I just wanted to add to the conversation by noting the Dan Glanville opinion from 1997. And it just talks about how even if you eliminated the ordinance for deputy chief, for example, it wouldn't actually eliminate that position. On the one hand, because it's, you know, created by the charter, but even if you were to eliminate it via charter, the deputy chief position would remain because it was negotiated into the collective bargaining agreement. So I think that Tasha did a really good job of explaining the way that we could come to the table as a city and say, here's our ordinances, here's what we want. And the union has the ability to come to the table and say, we don't accept those terms, or we accept, you know, some of those terms. And the executive is the one who negotiates the terms of the contract. And so there will be, there will be, you know, I guess, amendments or movement around, you know, what our ideal is, which is what we're doing as a legislative body, is putting into ordinance form what our ideal arrangement would be. And the executive branch is going to the table with those, I guess, ideal points that we've created, but he's not the, the executive is not the lone actor there. And so there has to be some way of coming to a mutual agreement.
Counselor Bartley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to welcome, is Attorney Marshall?
Yes.
Went to the kinder gentler city council. I want to make sure you're welcome, because we haven't had you do, before us too often. And then just to the president, and I'm going to say, I can't echo enough what Counselor Sullivan had to say, Mr. President, because it does seem perverse, except if you, and I'm not going to, we're not going to go through the whole legislative history here. But when you think about it, and you think about the history of unions and how, you know, some municipal government, listen, municipal governments across the Commonwealth are negotiating contracts with firefighters, and then the rise of unions get to the legislature, and we all know the hierarchy of laws. I mean, state law is going to trump municipal ordinance. That's just a fact of life. So at some point, the legislature heard from the unions, and they said, insert this section into 150E, and there it is. Voila, just like that, just like that, with a stroke of a pen, signed by the governor, that's now state law, and state law says that in matters of collective bargaining agreements, if there is a conflict, state law is supreme. I mean, we have to live with it. I'm just, I mean, we'll leave it at that. I think we should get back to the merits of the question at hand, as opposed to, you know, theoretical arguments, but that's really where, that's my perspective. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Just my thoughts on residency.
Just my thoughts on residency, I said it last night and I've said it before, I'm not a big fan of residency, but I recognize that many city councilors and many of our residents are. But I just like to reword Counselor Sullivan's question and put it a little bit different is, the legislative body of any municipality cannot negotiate a contract, and therefore, we should not be negotiating a contract by creating laws that have an impact on the work life of any of our union people who have a right to bargain their work, their daily work life. And that ordinance, the mistake in the ordinance was, not that the city council didn't have a right to express their feelings and opinions about residency, the mistake is, it should be a charter change, not an ordinance change. The charter change is state law and is directly connected to our, to our mass general laws and adopted by the, by the legislature and by the governor itself. However, at the same time, I think the charter belongs to the people, not to a given legislative body at any moment in time. I believe, you know, the, there was good faith acted on both the city, the mayor's in charge of the negotiations, and I believe this is a fair agreement in front of us. And I ask if there's no more questions, that we move the previous question.
Second. All right, so the motion is to go to the first reading, is that what you're asking, Counselor McGivern?
Yes.
Motion is passed the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call the order, the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for ten A, which is the transfer of four hundred and three thousand eight hundred and four dollars and forty-one cents for the various line items to fund the contract.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
You're unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Also up is ten F. We took them up as a package. That one is that it has been complied with.
The motion is complied with, and we will keep a copy in the archives of the Finance Committee folder.
Is complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, suspend rules and take up item twenty-two, please.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up item twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? From Counsel Resnahan, the following employees receive the amount included below as part of their raise from the following dates. Seven-one, two thousand eighteen, to eight-twenty-two, two thousand eighteen, thirty-six working days. Dale Glenn, four dollars, seventy cents per day at thirty-six days equals one ninety-six twenty cents. Jeanette Barrios, the same. And then five dollars, seventy cents for Susan at thirty-six for two hundred and five dollars and twenty cents, works in the city's auditor's office and asked me to figure out her part. So...
I would just ask that, that this is a, this was a negotiated contract that was overseen by, I believe, the previous auditor or acting auditor, and I would just ask that we vote on this tonight. We're talking about a total of five hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty cents. I've had the pleasure of working with all three of these employees. There's no, there's just no funny business, there's no residency requirements. He's got, these ladies work very hard at their job, dedicated City of Hoyok employees to collectively, they've got fifty, fifty years, easy, working for the City of Hoyok, and they do it every day. So I would ask that we, you know, the three of them are here, we have the permanent auditor here now, if there's any questions about this. But again, we're talking four hundred and fifty-three dollars. The contract was supposed to go to July first, but it didn't go into effect for whatever reason, that, you know, people were transferring jobs or whatever that might be. But, you know, we're not talking a ton of dough, and I'd like to get them what they deserve for their hard work. Thank you.
Is there a financial transfer for this, as to where it's coming from, where it's going to?
I didn't get, no.
Did you get one?
You have to have a transfer from somewhere.
Motion to suspend the rules, allow the auditor to speak.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
So, of course, I came after this was already in place, but it's actually a list of people that were given a raise, and what happened was, it went from the date of the council meeting versus the beginning of the budget year. It's all, the transfer is already done for the whole year, so I'm not sure why it went into effect that day. Maybe the prorated amount wasn't requested at the time of the council meeting, but I just wanted to say, it's not just three individuals, it's actually one, two, three, or five, six, seven, eight individuals, but the transfer was done at that time.
Is this the three percent raise?
Yes.
So that was already approved by the city council? So what is this?
Who's missing?
From my understanding was that it was implemented as of the date of the acceptance and did not retro back to, was it July first? July first. But it was funded, so I'm like, I came in at the middle of it.
Well, we, Counsel Vacan, go ahead.
So I was the maker of that order for the three percent, and if the money is there, and all the other people that got paid, got paid from July on, I think these people should be paid from July on. The money's there, it just didn't get expended until after we had voted on it, which just took procedural time.
It's housekeeping almost.
Mr. President?
It's like housekeeping?
Right.
Just, just to back up, so it is approved, we voted for the raise, and it was done. So the money is there.
Yes.
What are you asking from us?
To pay it. I think...
Well, they don't have to ask, it was already approved.
Okay, I, and I, like I said, I came in at the end of it, and the raise was implemented as of...
August twentieth.
August versus July?
Well, if there was a shortage, we approved it, whether or not it was funded correctly or not, or the total wasn't. So if we approved the three percent raise for ten thousand dollars to cover everybody, but you have a shortfall of a thousand dollars, just example-wise, then you have to come back with a transfer request of a thousand dollars to then fund the shortfall. That's how the process works. Or you approved the ten thousand dollars that wasn't paid correctly, the money's still there, go pay it.
So what you're saying is it's a non-issue, is what I'm hearing?
Well...
Well, I mean, but like, it's a, it should have been prorated, why it was implemented as of the date of the council meeting is unbeknownst to you or myself.
That's, we, when we approved the raise, the three percent raise, laws of department head approved the three percent raise. That came to us with a financial transfer of X amount from X account. That was approved by this council. Now, if the calculation is wrong, you have to go back and readjust. If it's not, they're entitled to the money because we approved the three percent raise.
Right.
With allocation. So this one, I'd say twenty-two is leave to withdraw, or actually, motion, because there really is no transfer, I'd say...
It's no transfer, I mean, so can, so in other words, do we have, the money's there. I hate to make it simple, can you cut him a check?
Yes.
Okay, so then just cut him a check tomorrow?
Yes, I was, I was not, I was giving...
I know you have nothing to do with this, this is not on you, I'm not, you're doing a great job, I don't mean like, but basically, we can just cut him a check tomorrow.
All right, so, however, the actual, so that, that's taken care of, I think. This, the order is, motion's complied with. Counselor McGivern.
If I remember correctly, we did this by ordinance?
Yep.
Okay, so I think we should vote on it because the ordinance is subject to passage after the day of the vote, when the mayor signs it. And I think that's the issue here, not the money. It wasn't a contract, you know, the appropriation was there. I agree with everything that's been said, but I think we should just go on record saying the ordinance should have been, we should have had language in the ordinance that went back to July one.
I don't think it hurts to vote on it, just to make it official.
As long as the money's there, we're not, you don't need a financial transfer.
The money's there, right?
Then, for this, so twenty-two motion would be to receive and adopt, or...
I, could I offer?
Counsel Vacan.
I would like to offer a motion that we make their raises effective seven-one eighteen.
Second.
For the three percent that we previously approved.
Second.
Second.
Motion is seconded.
Once we make it effective seven-one, then they get the money they already have sitting there.
Absolutely.
Counselor Leacy.
Thank you. And I know when our city auditor was up at the microphone, she mentioned that it wasn't just these three individuals, that it was eight individuals.
They got the raise.
So they got their full amount from, as of seven-one?
Nobody did.
Nobody did.
What, and I think Counselor McGivern touched on it a little bit, is the reason why they didn't is because they made it effective as of the date of the ordinance. So, I mean, being an accountant and in charge of a budget, you can go back, you can see the money was there for the whole year, but yet you got it from August twentieth or whenever they got it.
All right, so...
So then we should, we should amend the full order so that, so that individuals aren't called out individually and that, that we just say that the three percent raise passed on eight-twenty eighteen takes effect at the beginning of the fiscal year, seven-one eighteen.
For all eight employees that were part of that list. Counsel Vacan.
We just have to make sure there is money there.
There's definitely money there.
For the other people also.
Everybody.
It was all in the same, it was all in the same transfer. And I think the intention was July, it was just that the process was to approve the money, and we weren't thinking about how the date would impact relative to the ordinance.
Absolutely, it's clarity.
So do you have a list of those employees?
I have their positions, yes.
Could I have that, please?
I'll amend my motion if I...
Where you amend? Let's just get all eight in the record. Because we're going to make a motion amend. Right now, you only have three people on this order.
So you don't want to say those affected by the vote, like Counsel Leacy suggested?
You can, however you want to do it.
Either way.
Oh, here's the original order.
Yes, they should all get it.
So it's from head clerk, assistant director, twelve thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, to assistant auditor, assistant to the mayor, assistant to the fire chief, reference librarian, librarian assistant, librarian assistant evening, custodian, financial manager, I think I got everybody. And they're all, so motion would be to, so that was agenda item thirty-one. So motion is that the order that the following employees from agenda item thirty-one, which was presented November seventh, two thousand eighteen, be amended to go back to seven-one two thousand eighteen.
Take effect.
To take effect, seven-one two thousand eighteen, for those eight employees from agenda item thirty-one.
Right, so I'll amend my motion to add the other five employees that aren't listed here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion now is to receive and adopt the order as amended to go back to seven-one two thousand eighteen for those eight employees. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I believe that's all set then. Mike, did you need this back? Thank you, Mr. President. All right. I asked for a copy of this, it would be put with the order. Thank you. All right, back to finance.
Thank you, everyone.
Finance is, oh, finance is not done, sorry. Item ten B. Committee on Finance has referred an order that the sum of eight million nine hundred and six thousand be appropriated to pay for the Jackson Street area sewer. This is a bond request.
Motion received, passed the first reading.
Second. Be adopted, motion is to receive, adopt, passed the first reading and under discussion. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think most city councilors know, so I'll do the abbreviated version, just to make sure that everybody listening will understand. This is the, a step, a new step in our answer to the Clean Air Water Act that the federal government has imposed on all communities for good reasons. The Clean Air Water Act says, and among a number of different things, that a community cannot be dumping raw untreated sewage into a water body such as the Connecticut River. The history of the City of Hoyok is very simple. When the City of Hoyok was built, that was what rivers were for, not only sewage, but stormwater, all kinds of contaminated stuff was dumped into rivers. In nineteen-sixties, the city complied with and built a wastewater treatment plant. However, the wastewater treatment plant does not meet the standards of what is known as combined sewer overflows, meaning that when it rains, when it pours, the sewer plant cannot hold on and it releases untreated sewage into the Connecticut River. Most of us know that roughly ten years ago, we took on a major project in, which was known as the Berkshire CSO, which was a, kept the stormwater and sewage combined, but built a holding facility that would allow for stormwater when storms came, to allow for a bigger capacity of holding untreated sewage in a different location next to the treatment plant, waiting until the water resided, and then taking the sewage and treating it before it goes into the Connecticut River. The federal government was pleased with that project. That represented about forty-five percent of the problems within the City of Hoyok. And over the years, we've talked about that, when we've talked about the other issues that go with the management of the plant and so forth. This is the next, probably the next bigger project that we will see. This is known as the, the South, it's the South Hoyok separation of sewer and stormwater project, for lack of a better way, better term. This is in the Jackson Street area, below the second level canal, surrounded by Cabbage Street going over to South Canal Street. And what this does with a series of, I'll hear in the document attached to the bond that you have, Mr. President, and I have in with me at the moment, it separates in this neighborhood, the sewers from the stormwater. The sewage will be directed to the Jackson Street pump, which will bring the sewage to the wastewater treatment plant for treatment itself. The stormwaters will be separated and thus can go into the Connecticut River. We currently don't treat stormwater, however, we do follow mandates of the federal government in terms of keeping the streets clean and keeping catch basins clean so that contamination of stormwater doesn't go into the river itself. The federal government is, has been knocking on our door, saying, as much as we were pleased with the Berkshire operation, Burke Street project itself, it's time the city does more to avoid fines. Counsel Sullivan pointed out that some of those fines under the worst of condition, conditions could start to exceed twenty-seven thousand dollars a day if the city is deemed negligent, as we very easily could be if we don't go forward. This is a bond, it's a bond, there was some good news last night that the, these type of bonds go through the mass water pollution abatement, and what we, what we do know is that we will qualify for a very low interest bond, and what we do know, being the lowest of, of medium incomes in the Commonwealth, we qualify for some help in terms of offsetting the total cost of the project and the bond itself. The Committee on Finance met with both the superintendent last night and our city engineer. Both have a very keen handle on this. It's a project that will be controlled by the city until the stuff is ready to be put into the treatment plant for, for treatment itself. We believe for all the right reasons, one, we should not be dumping untreated sewage into the Connecticut River. Two, we are mandated not to dump untreated sewage into the, into the Connecticut River. But for all the right reasons, it's a, it's a fair project to go forward with, although it is costly, it is something that we recommend that the city council adopts this evening. There are some time constraints related to this. I believe, if someone on the committee wants to help me, but I believe if we get, if we can get this class to be shoveled in the ground by July something.
By first.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Murphy attended the meeting. What does, along with Counselor Bartley and Counsel Vacan, and the, was, in the Finance Committee, was a well-attended meeting?
Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, I, I, we did have one piece of good news last night with a potential ten percent discount, but let us not remember, we're doing a lot of bonding, and we knew this one was coming. Well, I mean, there are many more veteran councilors on here than, way more veteran councilors than me, but I certainly knew, I knew this was coming, but the more veteran councilors with ten years or more, they've known about this the whole time. And so, so here is now the, now it's, now the, the hens come home to roost. So here we are with an eight-point-nine billion, million-dollar bond, Mr. President, on top of the pool, on top of the fire, fire trucks, on top of, you know, maybe a debt exclusion thing of what we're going to have, on top of the sewer fund, on top of CPA, on top of the property tax increases, we just, I'm just saying it's adding up, Mr. President. So I did have, on the microphone last night, I did make a comment to the auditor, who's still in attendance tonight, that we've, hopefully prior to May, when we get the budget, as in way prior, maybe in March, I'm going to, I'll speak with the auditor offline myself, and I'll file the appropriate order after confirming with her, but we've got to get a better understanding as exactly what these debt obligations are doing to the budget, as opposed to lumped in that huge budget thing that we, budget book that we all get. And I know we all copiously read it, but... Um, and I know we all copiously read it, um, but we've gotta pull, we've gotta call that stuff out. So, I'm hopeful to work with the auditor so we can have a, a separate, uh, communication relative to that and so we can under, understand it that much better. But, I mean, I mean, the chairman summarized it very well as he always does. Um, there's, I, I don't really think we have a choice in this matter. As we pointed out, we're, we're subject to, I mean, they've, they've been, what the chairman didn't say, they've been passing the block, they mean D E P and EPA, they've been passing the block for, for years and years, giving us a break, but, I mean, break time's over, so, thank you.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes, thank you. Um, what wasn't mentioned was this is an unfunded mandate. So, the federal government, who I think quite frankly now is failing all of us, um, the fact that it's closed now, um, I would say they're making us do this and they've been making us do this for, uh, since, you know, sixteen, seventeen years ago. I think we started with Aquari and United Water, uh, whatever name they're calling themselves today. Um, they're making us do this and it's, it's the right thing to do. We certainly don't want sewage going to the Connecticut River. That's, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying though is, uh, who is watching the federal government? I want them to come in here. We should invite them into a meeting and say, exactly what do you need us to do? When do you want us to do it? You know, uh, we have a, a very good superintendent of the public works, he came in last night, we had a good meeting, um, but I would like to see a representative come in from the federal government. Uh, right now, the federal government's failing the Coast Guard, they're failing the TSA. These poor people are out there without any money, they're not making any money. And who's to say that they're gonna sit there and, and give us any fines? Who's to say that they're even, uh, manning this? Uh, I think it's a shame, it's a shame on, um, it's a shame on all of us because this is another unfunded mandate. Thank you.
Counsel Leacy.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Counsel McGivern in, uh, in his report mentioned that, uh, the DPW has a good handle on it and, uh, they think that they're going to be doing a lot of the work themselves, but I, I wanted to just get some clarification if they really meant they're going to be doing, uh, shovel-in-the-ground work themselves out of our, uh, DPW or, um, if it's just going to be contracted through the, the DPW.
Counsel McGivern.
Yeah, it will be a contracted, uh, project for, for the most part. There'll be some DPW work, but, you know, some of the work will be contracted out. Um, and I just, I just wanted to note, Counsel Bartley is correct, all these bonds have an impact on our entire, um, not only our entire budget, but on our, our looks, uh, when we go to Wall Street and our looks as to how solvent we are as a city. But one, one difference in this bond, or two differences in this bond is, one is, at the moment, the revenue coming to pay for this bond will be from the sewer rate itself, uh, not a direct impact on, on the taxpayer, but on taxpayers who pay the sewer rate. And the mass, uh, water pollution abatement trust who will be doing the bonding will also be doing short-term financing, the same thing that the city does, which means that the, uh, the full impact of the bonding, we're not looking into somewhere in twenty twenty-one, perhaps a little bit later depending on how the up, upfront, uh, short-term financing goes.
Anyone else? Counsel Bacon.
And as has been said before, we, you know, this is just a must-do item, but, um, in thinking longer term, we also had a conversation with our auditor and she's gonna be happy to come in and meet with us quarterly to keep us up to date on what the status with our accounts are. And we're also gonna be continuing a conversation relative to setting up bond payments and looking at how we can fund that going forward, um, in terms of long-term financial planning, so that when we're doing this bonding and we're looking at our overall budget, we're looking at it with an eye to strengthen our financial condition, which feels better to us now than it did in the past, but still we're behind the average community in our state with our financial condition and we really have to take concrete steps to improve it. So, within this context, uh, we need to try to do that. And we're running really tight, but she's made a commitment to work with us and I think we need to stay in much closer communication with our auditor than we have in the past.
Amen.
Thank you.
Counsel Murphy.
Yeah, just, uh, first of all, most of this will take place in the alleys of South Hoyoke. From what we were hea, heard yesterday, they're not gonna be digging up the streets so much, but most of the piping is in the alley, so that should be a little less inconvenient, but we're gonna have public meetings down there to try to get people ready and prepared to not be parking in alleys or driving through alleys as they get going. And we also, I know the redevelopment is talking about some development there, so we're gonna try to coordinate the good things in development and cleaning up the alleys without having, digging up an alley while we're trying to do development. So, we're gonna try to balance those off. And just a, a compliment to Linda's comment there, and, and I always wonder if this ever happens, but every time we do a bond, it would be nice if we had a relatively good concept of what that bond is gonna cost us principle-wise and interest-wise over the life of that bond. Is this a twenty-year bond? How much is that twenty years costing us? And eventually, are there other alternatives to bonding? But, uh, again, I, I'm meeting with the superintendent and engineer, uh, this week to try to clarify exactly when the timing is, but they, they are trying to get it started July first.
One thing I'll point out on the bonding is, with anything, when other things come in to help offset the bond, before they go out for the whole bond, they can reduce it. And I will point out, uh, Counsel Sullivan's, uh, work with regards to Puyott Pool, I did receive several emails from, uh, the superintendent, uh, DPW, with regards to Counsel Sullivan's actions on getting the, uh, pool and debris out of there and save the city roughly a hundred thousand dollars, maybe a little more, or if you had an update on that, Mike?
Yeah, um, it's, right now, it's up to a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars off the cost and it looks like there's a potential for maybe, uh, another fifty thousand or so. And we can really, really, um, thank the actions of, uh, Mike McManus, the, the crew at the DPW and our, uh, city demolition supervisor for taking on this work. Um, also, uh, good news, as long as we're on the Puyott Pool, just a little intermission here, uh, we did also receive the other day, a four hundred thousand dollar, uh, park grant also came through. So, that, even though we've approved two million in bonding, it looks like we're gonna be somewhere, uh, maybe, a, and we've still gotta go through a bidding process.
Let's not lose it this time.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's done. We've got it. And so, even though we've approved two million, it looks like we're gonna come in somewhere in the neighborhood of one point five.
Alright, thank you very much for that, Counsel Sullivan. So, with that, Counsel McGivern?
Just real quick, I just wanna give credit to our new War Two counselor, uh, that he, uh, he made sure, he just mentioned it, most of the work's gonna be done in the alleyways, but there's still gonna be inconveniences to both residents and, uh, and businesses. And he made sure that, and the DPW agreed that they will very shortly be notifying people of the timeline of the project and the timeline in their particular area. Essentially, it's, it's not gonna be all of South Hoyoke under construction, but it'll be going street by street or maybe two or three streets at a time.
Alright, there's no further discussion. A motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the eight point nine million dollar bond.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the bond. Ten C, the committee on Finance has referred a request for one hundred and twenty-seven dollars to pay, uh, city liability damages from a prior fiscal year. Recommend that be adopted.
Motion to receive, pass first reading.
Motion to receive, pass first reading. Under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Uh, real quick, we're, it's a twofold vote. One is that we're allowing a bill from last year be paid with monies from this year. Uh, this is the city's liability damage insurance premium itself. I learned a term that I never heard last night, but I think it was Counsel Leahy and a couple people who said that. This is called a true-up, if I'm saying it correctly.
Alright, true-up.
And it essentially is, it, it's a moving floating target. At the end of the year, the prem, the actual premium is calculated. We could actually get money back. Sometimes we have to pay, pay some more. You don't know at the end of the year, so no monies were encumbered until after the first of the year and we're just catching up with a bill that has to be paid.
No further discussion. Motion is to pass the first reading.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. If you vote, uh, clerk call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Ten D, committee on Finance has referred an order that thereby be appropriated nineteen thousand five hundred from DPW police mechanic to, uh, repairs.
Motion to receive, pass first reading.
Motion is to receive, pass first reading. Under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Uh, real quick, the superintendent's coming from his line item of, uh, the, the DPW reports there is, um, ample money available in this line item. A police mechanic position has been vacant. They are attempting to, uh, to fill it at this time and, and hope to fill it very shortly. Uh, the reason for the transfer, we did have the, uh, police in a, a prior meeting and we discussed this in general, is without the mechanic, some in-house repairs have not been done. More repairs have been going out, uh, some, uh, some mostly local to Mark Card Ford and, and repair shops, uh, repair places like that. Uh, this will go into the police department for repairs needed. The fleet is getting old. Um, I know we're, we're slowly, um, replacing cruisers, but not in the timely fashion that we usually do. So, we recommend that the, uh, transfer be, uh, be approved this evening.
No further discussion. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Ten E, the committee on Finance has referred an order that the hereby appropriate as amended to the budget for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, July first, two thousand eighteen through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, by the departments for the purposes specified, uh, retired teachers health insurance, air pollution, so on and so forth.
Counsel, I, I would like to just make a motion that we receive the committee report and adopt, um, a request that this, these monies are in the cherry sheet. If you, if you look at each of these items, um, and picture the cherry sheet that we receive a copy of as we begin the budget cycle each year, um, you, you would see an item that would be a lump sum of all of this. And we've had discussions on some of these specific items in the past, more so in, in recent years, about charter school spending, tuition, and the way that works, about the school sending, choice sending tuition, the way that works, and the impacts of special education. And we, we've heard from the, both the, uh, the school side of the budget with Anthony Soto and, uh, our receiver superintendent, and we've heard from a prior auditor and now we've heard from our, our new auditor, that it really is, and the state recommends that we, that we separate this for all practical reasons, that we understand it better. Although it, it's, it is part of, of when, when the budget is balanced, it's not part of the line item budget, but rather the cherry street, cherry sheet itself, which has an impact on the monies that are raised and has the, uh, I guess you would say it's, it's the, uh, it's the bible when it comes to the, uh, a picture of where the city is in a given point in time. And of course, that picture changes as the year goes on, but this would make it much better and much more transparent. Uh, we had our auditor in. I, I hope I'm saying what she just said last night, more or less, and I think she said it much more eloquently, but we believe it's the right thing to do at this time.
Counsel Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, last night, uh, you know, as we've been duly noted, it was a very good meeting. We had a long meeting, we had a lot on the plate and we accomplished a lot. Um, oftentimes, uh, we ask questions and we don't know the answers to. Uh, I think myself and Counsel Sullivan, Michael Sullivan and I, uh, we had a question in regards to one of the line items, uh, R M V non-renewal surcharge. And I was lucky enough to get home, um, very late last night from our meeting and in, in my inbox, there's an email from, uh, one of our constituents, Mary Burks, um, with the cherry sheet, forty-eight pages of it. So, uh, thank you for that reading last night. Um, I read most of the pages, uh, uh, but it gave us kind of a synopsis of exactly what we were talking about. So, uh, the technology's pretty incredible, especially when you're getting emails with your, uh, your answers. So, we, uh, we just wanna, at least I wanna thank you for, uh, helping us out there. Thank you.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yeah, and, uh, I had the same pleasure as Counsel Leahy of getting that and I dug through it and found on page thirty-six of the cherry sheet, one of the line items is ninety-seven thousand six hundred forty dollars for registry of motor vehicle non-renewal surcharge. So, this is buried in with all this good cherry sheet stuff about the schools and stuff. And so, I dug out this page thirty-six and it's an estimated number from the registry of motor vehicles. Um, and to make this number work, you, you gotta understand, anytime somebody has a parking violation, an unpaid motor vehicle excise tax or an abandoned vehicle, uh, you can flag the person for non-renewal of their license. The reg, and the registry charges twenty bucks to do that. And we're supposed to charge twenty bucks and this is to reimburse the registry for doing that. Now, mind you, this was an estimated number given to us by the registry and we just go ahead and approve this number. Um, in order for that number to be accurate, in Hoyoke, there would've had to been four thousand eight hundred and eighty-two unpaid or unregistered vehicles tagged. Now, we're a city of forty thousand people. I, I don't think that there's forty thousand cars. Um, you know, you, we have seven thousand households. Um, this, this is just, this, this is just a phony number, or it's gotta be proven to me that four thousand eight hundred and eighty-two vehicles got tagged in the city for non-payment? I, I find that an, uh, uh, just an unfathomable number. I, I don't know if there's some way to approve this or pass this along without paying that money to the registry of motor vehicles, without proof, without documentation showing where the, where they're coming up with this estimated number. I guess that's a question for the.
Sure, we'll give. We'll, we'll, we'll have Joe go wait in line at the R M V. Counsel McGivern.
Uh, I'm not sure if this is a good answer or a bad answer, uh, Counsel Sullivan, but a long, long time ago, an auditor, we asked a similar question when we were doing the budget and the cherry sheet, and about something that, you know, what if we just didn't pay this? And that, that magic man just said something very simple. When it comes to the state, if they don't catch you here, they're gonna get you over there. So, the idea is, sometimes, is to keep the state happy. And don't forget, there's a lot that comes in through the state in terms of chapter seventy monies, in terms of chapter ninety's monies, and we're not always in agreement with the state in terms of things like the Quinn bill, but there's a lot that does come from the state, lottery monies. So, if you wanna argue one item with them, go ahead, but they'll get it one way or the other.
So, this is, motion is that the order's been to receive, adopt, complied with. How do you want to do it?
We have to adopt it.
The reason I say to receive and adopt is, uh, my understanding is, it's not an appropriation the way it was originally worded. It's an amendment to the cherry sheet, more or less an amendment to the original, uh, budget language, not, not the budget line items. And we're just, we're just, um, breaking out the, uh, the, these items on the cherry sheet that were linked together.
So, motion is to receive and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. No.
yes, you're voting for, that it's been adopted, if you vote no, you're voting against.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine, oh, Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Bresnahan?
Nope.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Nine yeas, two, three nays.
With your vote, you approve this, receive and adopt. Uh, ten F was already taken care of, there was no public safety, public service, development and government relations committee, thirteen A, the committee on DGNR, was referred a special permit amendment application for Mount Tom Solar LLC, recommended that the special permit application be approved.
Uh, motion to uh, receive, adopt the committee report and grant the special permit.
Motion is to receive, adopt, and grant the permit, under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Well, all of you were on vacation after December eighteenth, uh, the GR kept plugging away, and we met on December nineteenth, we just, the train kept rolling, and so this is a committee report from December nineteenth, the tie-in bond was present, um, representing Mount Tom Solar LLC, affiliate of NG, uh, this is the second amendment to the existing city council special permit, this need was triggered by the Hoyoke Fire Department, that said additional fire suppression is required since the project is in a floodplain, city council approval is required, the amendment will allow for the road to be widened from twelve to twenty feet, improve the roadbed quality, and move the road away from the abutters property line, so based upon that, the committee recommended to this body that we approve the special permit, just as a, as a miscellaneous remark, Mr. President, I'm still not clear, uh, 'cause I haven't been out that way in a bit, as to the status of the smokestack, uh, rel, that, the, the smokestack that was scheduled to come down?
Standing.
Okay, three, three years ago, so that's corporate America, or whatever they are, corporate international, wherever they're from, I think they're from France, um, and then we were, we were advised that though this body, uh, well, we were, we were advised that there, that demo is nevertheless imminent, it was imminent three years ago, but it's, it's really imminent now, and then we were also advised that the monopole, which, if everybody knows a monopole, 'cause we approved it, and we also approved the one at the top of uh, uh, Juan, at the top of um...
Community field.
Community field, thank you, uh, we, we approved that, uh, and we're gonna paint that with a big red and blue for Kevin Jordan's uh, campaign sign, or whatever it was, but we, we neglected to consider that, so, uh, we approved that monopole, we have, supposedly another monopole out, out in Smiths Ferry, that monopole is, we're understanding, is no longer going to be used on that site, so that, those are just two asides, Mr. President, I just want to make that, that clear while I had a minute while we're on the topic, thank you.
No further discussion, this is a roll call, correct?
Roll call.
Clerk will call, roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit.
McGivern?
Roll?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the special permit.
Mr. President, can we suspend and take thirteen B and C as a package, take it off the table for discussion?
Second.
Motion is to suspend the rules, take up thirteen B and C, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? B, the committee on DGNR, who has referred a petition from neighbor to neighbor, an MOU between the Hoyoke Gas Electric and Columbia Gas to establish pipeline, have considered same and recommend they are being complied with, and thirteen C, the committee on DGNR was referred a resolution to the Hoyoke City Council, November fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, and the resolution with regards to renewable and clean energy sources, recommend they be complied with.
Uh, the motion is to receive the committee report.
Second.
Motion is to receive the considered report, it was second aid, under discussion?
Uh, we had a very spirited conversation, we had the manager of the gas and electric with us, we had the acting gas division superintendent with us, and we had several, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine members of the public, um, with us to discuss, from neighbor to neighbor and, and other, uh, relative groups discussing this, um, we did vote on it in public session, Mr. President, we, we took a vote in open public session, as most, that this was complied with, um, after, during the meeting, the maker of the order went out into the hallway, had a discussion with neighbor to neighbor, came back to us, and after the meeting got closed, she, uh, she, she asked us to, for her sake, um, and for neighbor to neighbor's sake, send the, send the motion, send the order back to committee, so, so I'm saying that in open meeting right now in the public, so that was a conversation that happened after the meeting, and it, it was my opinion, out of deference to the maker, who is not with us tonight, uh, the co-fileer is now in Chicago, so he, he's no longer gonna be with us, so we said at the time, or I said to myself at the time, I will take the order up, and out of courtesy and respect, we will, I, I will make a motion to send it back to DGR, which would, uh, which I wish the word to Counselor was still in the room with us, because he's now on the committee, but that, that committee will meet, uh, December, it's like, February?
February.
Fourth at six o'clock.
February fourth?
So, I would just, I, I don't wanna go through the whole rigmarole of it now, um, just out of, out of courtesy and respect to the maker and to this organization, but I just want to end with a caveat, uh, the manager and the acting, um, acting superintendent were, were courteous, respectful, they were on point, they were prepared, and, and frankly, neighbor to neighbor was, was also courteous, and, and they, they, you know, we, I think we ran a pretty good meeting that night, but without going through the whole rigmarole, Mr. President, I just want to make a motion to refer it back to DGR, where we'll take it up December, uh...
I was gonna ask that, 'cause the Counselor did ask that prior to leaving, but thank you very much for giving it...
Say it again.
The Counselor did ask that, uh, so I, I do appreciate you pointing that out, so thank you very much.
We advise a twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, a friendlier counsel.
No, 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 she just gave me, she gave me the heads up.
We advise a counsel that night, but I, I guess, I guess had to be underlined with the President.
No, 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 I'm just, well, I'm just saying that she did point out, I do appreciate it. Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I just want to echo, um, Mr. Chairman's remarks, that it was a good meeting, it was really well attended, uh, everybody was courteous, uh, and I'm glad the manager and the guest, uh, us, acting gas superintendent came in and, and answered all our questions, and, and Counselor Valentine did state that, um, we've afterwards, 'cause she had spoke to them, uh, neighbor to neighbor, if we could, uh, send this back to committee, and Counselor Bartley's doing that, and I think that's fair, and we'll be taking up in just a couple of weeks.
Right, so motion was to send back to DGNR, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's thirteen B and C, thirteen D, committee on DGNR, who was referred that the city council invite in the Hoyoke State delegation to future DGR meeting, that's been complied with.
Uh, motion, receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion is to receive and adopt, under discussion?
Uh, this is gonna be, this is gonna be a speed round, everybody likes that, so we had, uh, we had the state delegation, uh, here, um, we're also gonna talk about, uh, I don't, I don't wanna take thirteen F and G up at, at this time, but we'll separate those up, but those, those came up, uh, during discussion, so, so we talked about exit fifteen, we talked about exit seventeen, we talked about Kelly School, we talked about, um, what's gonna happen in next session, we talked about community hospitals, we talked about HCC, uh, we discussed, um, the receiver, we discussed charter school reimbursement, we just, we discussed, uh, uh, the topic I brought up is, again, with the receiver, there are absolutely no benchmarks with the guy, now, he's, he's a wonderful gentleman, it, I'm not being mean, but there is no horizon for the receiver, so let's just be real about that, we, we, we talked about home rule petition, we talked about the Quinn bill, um, we talked about casino money, and then, um, that was it, so we had a very spirited discussion, I want to thank Senator Humison, I want to thank Rep Vega for their time and their courtesy, they advised that they would like to come back in March or April, so, uh, I'll file, I'll file another order with, with the committee members, with, uh, with Juan and the other committee members, and we'll, we'll have them, uh, we'll, we'll have them come back in, in March or April, because they want to discuss, uh, specific budget items, because this is a time of year for budget, that's it.
So, motion is that it's been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, Mr. President, could we take thirteen?
Hold on one second, Counselor Sullivan, sorry.
Oh.
You got a question? Yeah, no, just, uh, I had my end up before on the last one, I didn't get a chance...
I apologize.
Yeah, that, that's all right, if, if we could just go back, I just had a comment for the public, to go back to the meeting with the, uh, uh, gas electric commission and the, the neighbor to neighbor group, one important thing that came out of that meeting, um, also, uh, was that Hoyoke right now is at a critical point in its gas line supply, and I think the public should be aware of this, right, that if, if we have a severe cold snap, uh, we may not be able to supply everybody, there could be houses right now with the supplies we have, that could lose heat, all right, we're at that critical of a juncture in the city, there's not enough gas supply coming in here to support any new business, either, so, this is, you know, one thing that we, you know, did come out of this meeting, it's, and it's something that I think the public needs to be aware of where we're at with this.
Okay.
So, back to Counselor Bartley, thirteen E.
Oh, yes, uh, if we could take thirteen E, F, and G as a suspend rules, take as a package.
Motion is to suspend the rules, take up E, F, and G as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? E is a resolution in solidarity, supported the nurses and staff at Providence Hospital, F is, refer that the city council asks the state delegation to file legislation to delete Mass General Law Part One, Title Seven, Chapter Forty P, Section Four, which prohibits rent control ordinances, and G is asking a state delegation, uh, same order, allowing an exception to gate city, gateway cities to adopt rent control policies without having reimbursed them.
Yeah, motions to, uh, receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion is to receive, adopt the committee report, which is given leave to withdraw for E, F, and G, under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Thirteen E, the, uh, the maker of the order is, uh, is, uh, in Chicago, and we, we, upon his advice, I didn't take it up before the election, I asked him, he said no, I said okay, so we took it up, uh, in November, and he was unavailable for the meeting, so we took it up in December, and he's unavailable for the meeting, so, ended the line, that was that, and then thirteen F and G, uh, we were advised by our state rep, uh, Rep Vega, that, um, while those are potential issues, he, he reminded us that those were, those were, um, at a, at a ballot question, those were taken up in twenty sixteen, and they were, um, defeated by general vote of the public, so, he said there's really no appetite in Boston, uh, for that, so we said, um, but, but, but we did discuss it that night, we, we did bring it up that night, and he said it's just, it's just not realistic, because they're both defeated at the ballot box, so that was that.
Any further discussion? No further discussion, motion is to give leave to withdraw for all three, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There was no charter and rules, joint committee on school and council, motion orders and resolutions sixteen from Counselor Bartley, that the city council adopt the following resolution and submit to the governor and the great general, uh, court, uh, city of Hoyoke, uh...
Mr. President, you can just do abbreviated read, I'll, I'll hit the, I'll hit the high point, highlights.
Uh, support the police department and adopt the state law known as the Quinn bill, uh, if you wanna go...
Yeah, can I just make a quick friendly amendment on the, on the one, two, three, four, fifth whereas, I should say section, I had a typo on there, it's not chapter, it's, it's just, go...
Section one oh eight.
Section one oh eight L.
Motion is to amend, uh, from chapter one oh eight L to section one oh eight L, all those in favor, all the opposed?
And, and my, my motion is to, uh, receive, adopt, well, suspend our rules, receive, adopt, and, uh, and refer this to, uh, uh, state delegation and the governor, and then, uh, so I'll work with Ryan to do that.
Second, me too.
Adding on Counselor Bresnahan, Counselor Bacon, this is, the motion is to receive and adopt and send to the...
Yeah, suspend rules, receive, adopt, refer to the state delegation.
Yes, since they all got big raises, I think they should give us the money back for the Quinn bill.
Any further discussion?
Well, that's just my, that's just my motion, I'll just go with this quick discussion, if I may.
All right, under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the Quinn bill, and, um, so I, I just laid out the, you know, and the whereas, as I try to keep it short and sweet, and then, uh, here, here, and then it's, it's still general law, so everybody should know, it's, it's still Massachusetts law, that they, that the Commonwealth is supposed to fund half the Quinn bill, it's on the books, and, uh, and, and we've, we've had the state delegation before us, but I, I, I know they're making an effort, but we, we have to make an effort in this body to, to make it known as best we can, um, that it's state law, you ought to fund it, so now hereby be it resolved that the city come, uh, council demands a governor legislature, um, they took oaths to uphold all these, the constitution and Mass General Law, they took, they took an oath to uphold that law, they, they just did it, they just did it January third or fourth, whatever it was, they took an oath to uphold the law, the law says it shall be funded, I, I, I don't think we can make any more clear than that, so I, I, and it's, it's, you know, I'd like to suspend rules and do it now, because this is a critical time of year where, where they're, they're, they're only accepting budget amendments, I think through the end of next week, so, so it's not like we have all, all data to debate this, I tried to hit the high points without being too critical, and might, maybe, it may have been a little bit critical in there, I admit it, but, uh, but nevertheless, it's been ten years without them funding it, so, so there's that.
All right, Counselor McGivern?
I agree wholeheartedly with the resolution, and thank the good counselor for sponsoring it, uh, being the year, uh, two thousand and nineteen is a kinder and gentler city council, I would just think we maybe could change demands to respectfully request.
Second.
I know, I know, that's a tough request.
Second, uh, second, uh.
Can we give some solidarity on this and have everybody put their name on the order?
Yeah, I guess, I, I wrote this in twenty eighteen, if I may, Mr. President, so...
I'll be happy to sign it, vote for it, and I agree with you, Counselor President.
So, you're making amendment, Counselor McGivern?
Respect the request.
To request instead of demands, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, the motion is to receive, adopt, and send to the governor and general court, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstained.
And one abstention. Seventeen from Counselor Bartley, order that the city clerks and a communication devise on the cost to the city of special elections, refer to charter and rules and a copy to DGNR, further city council considers suspending its rules to allow the clerk to send a communication to DGNR at a time of two, four, or nineteen meeting.
Well, so, the, the motion is to, to receive and adopt the committee report, I mean, to receive and adopt this, um, this motion, I guess I gotta get a second for it.
Second.
Okay, so, um, yeah, we, we can't do that generally, but I did speak with, uh, with the clerk, um, a few weeks ago, and she, she agreed that this is doable, and she could, she could get done, that she'd been working on it, first of all, which is very cool, and she's already gotten, got a jump on this, and so she, I just wanted to send a direct communication to DGR for our February fourth meeting, city council meeting February fifth, so, I mean, I mean, she could send it to me, we could just take it up, I just want to be, I want the ability to take it up in committee, um, at that point, and then, we also have, uh, an order before charter and rules relative to that vote, Mr. President, as you know, we referred it to, uh, that, um, that we had at the December eighteenth meeting, uh, relative to the vote, so I think the order should go to that committee, but I want a copy to go to DGR, 'cause we're, we're gonna, we're, we're, that is a topic that's gonna be discussed at the DGR meeting on December, February fourth.
All right, so motion is to receive, adopt, send to DGNR, and a copy...
Yeah, copy DGR, and, so, send it to charter and rules, but send a copy DGR for, so the clerk can send it directly to my committee.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right.
Eighteen, from Counselor Bartley, that the city clerk and the honorable media broadcast, uh, delivery of ballots and election results on election day, this order would be better able, would better able the city clerk to publicly announce vote totals and election results, if approved, please, uh, promote this to citizens, uh, channel fifteen and channel twelve.
Uh, motion to receive and adopt.
Second.
Second.
Motion is to receive and adopt and send to...
Yeah, just under discussion, I, I confer with, with a clerk, um, she was on board, I spoke, I spoke with the Hoyoke media last night, uh, he's on board and really excited, he says he's gotta, gotta tweak it up a little bit, but it's gonna be great, so when the police bring the boxes in, you know, through the gate, you can bring up the Brenner, Brenner will be on the mic?
That's cool.
And read them off, and then, on top of that, Hoyoke media's gonna have a little scroll at the bottom, bottom of the, bottom of the TV on channel twelve, fifteen, you know, the, the totals, I mean, this is, this is gonna be...
And percentage of precincts reported.
Be like a party. This is, this is, yeah, exactly, Counselor Lisi, this is gonna be...
The high-tech world.
This is gonna be Edgar C kinda stuff, on election, I think Brenner's gonna be like this huge star, so I, I'm just, I'm psyched about it. You're gonna have balloons and cake, soda.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Why not? Please.
To, to actually have new voting machines in, in the polls, so that we can actually report the numbers, in case they break down, they're only twenty years old, I'm just kidding, but...
Oh, okay, I know, so, so Brenner's on board, that was the main thing, I wouldn't have done it without Brenner's okay, so I would never have filed this, I asked her beforehand, so...
All right, so motion is to receive and adopt, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yeah, just refer, yeah.
Nineteen to, once again, Counselor Bartley.
Just, I can just read the first sentence, half sentence.
Motion is to receive, refer to ordinance, under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, so good luck reading through this. Enjoy that. And and you'll find in there, under seven point, ten point six, subchapter E, the one sentence relative to deliveries in our ordinance. So I'm I'm hopeful that we can, you know, I know we passed it, and we passed it back in December. I didn't vote for it, but that's okay. So but I thought it would be, if we could maybe expand upon our regulations relative to allowing deliveries in the city of Hoyoke for cannabis products. That's the only point. Thank you.
All right, so to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty from Counselor Bartley, order that the mayor provide an update to see council by its second meeting in February on the findings and recommendations of the mayor's task force to combat panhandling.
Yep, just receive, adopt, refer to public safety with a copy to the mayor.
Motion is to receive, adopt.
Add Sullivan to that.
First adding Counselor Sullivan and Counsel Bacon. Motion is to receive, adopt, send to public safety, copy to mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-one from Counsel Bresnahan, order that the Hoyoke Police Department have an officer stationed at Jim's Mobile on North Hampton Street during the hours that buses are picking up and dropping off students.
Maybe I sign on to that, Danny?
What's that now?
Yeah, sign on to that.
I'd like to sign on.
I got a phone call over there.
Adding everyone? Motion would be receive, adopt, and send to the chief. And a copy to public safety. Counsel Lisi.
Uh, thank you. I know that Counselor Anderson Burgos and I contacted the chief about this already. And Captain Moriarty has been assigned to this location. So I think that we could schedule a public service, or a public safety meeting, rather, and have the captain in to hear what what is actually happening, what's he, what's he seeing, and what what changes are being made there. And if there's anything that he recommends the council pass in terms of traffic ordinances to to improve that situation.
Counsel Leahy.
I agree. We should definitely have them in and have a meeting. And we certainly love to have Captain Moriarty coming in to talk. And I think that we should definitely pass this tonight and have the police up there ASAP and not wait for a meeting because I don't know if everyone's seen the video of it. It's awful. I mean, cars are not stopping for children, and this is just ridiculous. Thank you.
Counselor Lisi.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear that the chief said that somebody's already been assigned to it. Like, so we're not waiting for a meeting to to assign someone. But we could have a meeting to get the results back of what's, what that, what that person up there is doing.
Okay, so the motion is to receive, adopt, and send to the police and to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-two is already done. Twenty-three from Counsel Bresnahan, ordinance committee review the current vacant blighted building ordinance by calling the health department, the health department, building department. Motion is to send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-four from Counsel Leahy and Counsel Bartley. Any city department receiving grant money as approved by the city council per master general law or any other authorized criteria shall within reasonable period of time, but no later than sixty days. From the conclusion of such grant, generate a detailed report. So motion would be to
Receive and send to ordinance.
Receive and refer to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-five from Counsel Leahy, that anytime the city council or city council or Department of Public Works change any ordinance or right of way that would affect the day-to-day operations of the police department, fire department, and that, the city clerk department immediately notify the departments.
Receive and send to ordinance and also to the city clerk.
Motion is to send to ordinance with a copy to the clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye. Under discussion. I did speak to Brenner about this. And I also spoke to the the fire department and the police department. And some of the departments seem to get notified from the press or from Facebook. And so a lot of times they don't know what's happening. So anytime there's any sort of travel, traffic rerouting, they should definitely get notified. I can't hear you.
Every department always gets notified by me in whatever's passed by the city council, too. So I can't be, like, on top of the departments to
I can't hear you.
No, I'm just saying, I can't, like, police the departments to do
No, I'm not asking you to. I'm just making sure that all the members know this. Because for, I'll give examples in committee, but.
Okay, so one to ordinance, copy to the clerk. Twenty-six from Counsel McGee, order that no parking from here to corner signs be installed pretty much around the new courthouse, juvenile courthouse. Not around, but by the One Elm Street entrance. This is actually from the judge who reached out. So motion would be send to ordinance.
Yeah, just a Just a correction. I believe that the address would be like one twenty-one.
Yeah, they they gave two different addresses, and that's the one I put down. We can always amend it.
Okay, okay.
But yeah, they went back and forth on that. But I wasn't messing with the judge.
No, you don't want to do that.
Yeah, but I do believe the judge is looking to come in, too, so
Oh, that's good.
To ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-seven from Counsel McGivern.
President, we can make a motion to suspend the rules to take up twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three, with thirty-four as a package and refer to committee and finance.
Twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-one.
Thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four.
Thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four. So twenty-seven is two hundred and eighteen thousand, forty cents from the office of the mayor for dues and subscriptions. Thirty-one is a bond approval for two point six million dollars to purchase. So this is amendment to the the trucks that we approved, the bond. Thirty-two is from free cash, eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars to various departments. Looks like a union contract. Forty thousand, two hundred and seven dollars from free cash to other departments. And then the last one looks like a grant, the safe grant. All those to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, suspend the rules to take up twenty-eight and twenty-nine together to pass the first reading.
Motion is to suspend the rules, take up twenty-eight, twenty-nine as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-eight is from firefighters, seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-two cents to injured on duty. The twenty-nine is from patrolmen, ten thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and two cents to injured on duty for firefighters. One, two. Patrolmen. Two. Just to update, show us assets. So motion would be receive, adopt, pass first reading, under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Mr. President, the typical more recent pay period where we are just transferring monies for salary for accounting purposes into a line item known as injured on duty for people who are injured on duty. Some of these are very short periods, although some are long term. We just feel it's good for us to know, but we can do it as it comes in.
All right, so motion is passed first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is
Motion to pass the second reading.
Pass the second reading. Clerk call, roll if you vote yes. You're voting for twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tooman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan? Leahy?
Uh, yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
And I apologize to Counsel Murphy. That was the first time he voted on that. And that might not, I'll explain to him later. Watch the TV, oh.
I keep hearing Counsel Murphy. I keep looking at Brenner.
Approve the transfers. Thirty
Mr. President, if we can suspend the rules and take up thirty-five and thirty-six as a
We we missed thirty, sorry.
Oh, we did?
So because
No, we said it. You said it.
Thirty.
That was finance?
Yeah.
So thirty was to finance. Thirty-five. From Counsel Bacon. What, would you want Counsel Bacon?
To take thirty-five and thirty-six as a package, please?
Thirty-five and thirty-six, suspend the rules, take up as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-five from Counsel Bacon, that the city council be updated on the status of the former geriatric authority property. Thirty-six, an update on the payment status regarding the money owed from Gandero to
Receive and refer to DGNR, please.
Opposed to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thirty-seven from Counsel Bacon, request that increased police patrols at or near Fifty Holy Family Road due to recent thefts and illegal car repairs in the area.
Receive, adopt, and refer to the police department, please.
Motion is to receive, adopt, and send to police department. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-eight from Counsel Bacon, that the police department enforce the no parking on Cherry Street. This is a safety issue to residents. Motion would be receive, adopt, and send to police.
Yes, that is the motion. Thank you.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Mr. President, can we take thirty-nine, forty, forty-two, and forty-three as a package? Refer to ordinance?
Said thirty-nine, forty.
Second.
Forty-two and forty-three.
It could really be all
No, you don't want to just send it back to engineer.